SFUSD.
Oh, you're gonna go, go, go for it, please.
SFUSD.
Interpretation announcement, please.
SFUSD will provide closed captioning and American Sign Language ASL interpretation services throughout today's board meeting. Live transcription can be found here, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot streamtext.net forward slash player question mark event equal sign SFUSD dashboard. Attendees who wish to provide public comment to the board and would like ASL interpreter can use the Q and A box in the Zoom app to type their name or handle and list the item or items on the agenda they would like to comment on. The attendee will need to have a functioning camera in order to communicate with the interpreter and the board. When it is the attendee's opportunity to provide comment, the Zoom host will promote the attendee to panelists and enable the attendees' video. Translation, go ahead, please.
Thank you. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the pin number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. El Distrito escolar unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, indique la clave, seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Can't let interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. 如果哪位需要我们的服务，麻烦请致电去Google Meet。
Thank you. That concludes our translation services.
Good evening, everyone. I now reconvene this regular meeting of the San Francisco Board of Education at 6:34 PM. Just a reminder that just a reminder that childcare is provided across the hall in the Educational Placement Center for children ages three to 10. I'm gonna ask if folks are having conversations to please take them out in the hallway because it's distracting for the meeting. Childcare is provided till 9:00 PM for ages, children ages three to 10 across the hall in the Educational Placement Center. We are going to move Section D, the annual organizational meeting, to after Section F, public comment in the agenda. So there was a little error in the order of the agenda, so that we will have the opening items. Then we will have the, then we will have public comment, and then we will have the annual organizational meeting. Oh, sorry, there is a report out from closed session. Yeah, thank you for reminding me. I'm gonna do the report out for closed session in just a moment, but before I do that, if you want to make public comment this evening, either on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, please go ahead and submit a speaker card here to Mr. Steele to your left. If you're a student, please write "student" on top of the card because we like to give priority to students. And if you're online and would like to make public comment, we will indicate when, when you can raise your hand. All right. Report from closed session. In the matter of student EH versus SFUSD OAH case number 2023100287, the board by a vote of six eyes, one commissioner of recusal, Ray, gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In three matters of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives direction to the general counsel. In one matter of anticipated litigation, the board by a vote of six eyes, one commissioner of recusal, Fisher, gives direction to the general counsel. And on one matter of public educate, sorry, public employee discipline dismissal release, the board by a vote of seven eyes approved an amendment to the statement of charges. That's the report out from closed session. Now we will move to item E, the opening items, and I will read our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tish Aloney, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tish Aloney have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland, and we wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tish community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. We will now move to item E2, the approval of board minutes from the regular meeting of December 10th, 2024. May I have a motion and a second on the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes, colleagues, to the minutes? Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Student delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice President Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes passes.
Thank you. I will now turn over to Superintendent Sue for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Alexander. Good evening, everyone. Once again, Maria Sue, Superintendent of SFUSD. Before I start my remarks, I do want to acknowledge, just take a moment to acknowledge the devastation, the devastation caused by the recent fires down in Southern California. Our thoughts are with the students, families, educators, and communities that have been deeply impacted by this terrible tragedy. Unfortunately, here in the Bay Area, we are no strangers to wildfires, and we totally understand how quickly it can spread and get out of hand. I want to share that the state superintendent of public instructions, Tony Thurman, and the California Department of Education have partnered with a nonprofit organization called SupplyBank.org. And this organization's task is to collect and distribute donations to schools and to communities that are impacted by the wildfire. So please go on our website and you can learn more about this organization if you are able to support. And then also, if you choose to go on to the California Department of Education's website to learn more about the work that the state is doing to support our sister city, our sister school districts. Next slide, please. So I would like to be the first person to officially welcome our newest commissioners to their first Board of Education meeting. So on behalf of the school, of the San Francisco Unified School District, I want to welcome Commissioner Jamie Huling, Commissioner Parag Gupta, and Commissioner Supriya Ray to our board, and then, of course, welcome back our dear Commissioner Matt Alexander. I and the entire staff look forward to working with you and, of course, to the returning commissioner on making sure that we achieve the promise that we made to our students and families of getting and producing academic excellence, as well as ensuring that we continue to uplift our school district's values and missions and goals. Thank you. On the point of values and goals and mission of SFUSD, as we prepare for the new federal administration and all the threats that was stated during the presidential campaign, I want to reiterate San Francisco Unified School District's commitment to protecting the rights of our students, families, and staff. Before the winter break, I sent out an email to our staff to make the statement, but I want to continue to make this statement as often as I can, in as many places as I can. Despite any uncertainty or challenges that may arise with the change of the federal administration, I want to assure everyone that we have policies in place to protect the rights of our students and our staff. As a sanctuary school district, SFUSD upholds every young person's constitutional right to feel safe and supported at school. And we strive to expand the scope of our sanctuaries to all families, and we want to make sure that everyone feels the support and is reaffirmed of this sense of safety. We will share with you all soon a list of frequently asked questions that students and staff and families have shared with us. And so at a later time, I will be sending that FAQ out to everyone. On a very important note here, I want to remind everyone that the deadline to apply to SFUSD's schools is quickly approaching. So you only have two and a half weeks left to apply because our deadline is January 31st at 11:59 PM. If your child is entering transitional kindergarten, kindergarten, middle school, or high school next year, they will need to apply for a new school. With the elimination of multiple application rounds, it is really important for families to submit their applications before the deadline of January 31st. If you have already applied for the 2526 school year, thank you. We are excited to welcome you, your students, and the entire family back to school. If you have not yet applied, please go to our website, sfusd.edu/apply to learn how you can apply online or with a paper application. If you need additional help to apply, you can come into our enrollment center here for support. They actually have office hours tomorrow if you want to come in, where counselors will be here to support you in going through the application process. You can also call the center or visit us between the hours, on Mondays to Fridays, between the hours of 8:00 PM to 4:30 PM. You can also come out to our enrollment center Bayview office at 1520 Oakdale Ave this Thursday from eight, oh, on Thursdays, from 8:00 PM to 4:30, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Thank you. Speaking of the Bayview neighborhood, please come out and meet our wonderful principals, teachers, and staff from our elementary schools in the Bayview at our Bayview Enrollment Fair on January 22nd. Participate in free raffles with great prizes from Generation Thrive, which is our partner at The Warriors. You can get grab-and-go food, meet members of the Parent Advisory Council, including the African-American Achievement and Leadership Initiative and the Matua Advisory Council. Our enrollment counselors will also be there, and once again, enrollment is due January 31st. So please come out and visit our schools. And I want to share that last Wednesday, our 46th mayor was inaugurated into office, Mayor Daniel Lurie, at a wonderful, beautiful ceremony over in Civic Center Plaza. What made it even more beautiful was that our SFUSD students were featured in a lot of the different performances and events. I was so, so proud to sit there and watch our Balboa marching band played, and as well as the color guard students out there welcoming guests in. We also had students from McCoppin Elementary School, Yikwo Alvarado, Willie Brown Middle School, who spoke and introduced each of the different performances or public speakers. And then on December 19th, I had the great opportunity to join our school, our teachers, staff, community partners, and parents and guardians in observing a fifth-grade math lesson using the new Teaching Through Problem-Solving curriculum and the use of lesson study. It was so amazing to watch how, number one, fantastic our teachers were and their bravery of putting themselves on display in front of hundreds of people. But it was super impressive to watch these fifth-grade students also engaging and learning and asking such important questions. The lesson study was, is a result of a collaboration, a research project, with, with our teachers from four, from four different schools, Sanchez, John Muir, Daniel Webster, and Flynn. And we are so excited with the partnership with DCYF, the Department of Children, Youth, and Their Families, to provide us with the resources to do this, where we're bringing in innovative ways to work and support our, our teachers. And then as a reminder for everyone, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is this coming Monday. School sites and offices will be closed in honor of Dr. King's memory. School sites will also be closed to celebrate Lunar New Year on Wednesday, January 29th. However, the district's office will be open that day. So that concludes my superintendent's report. But I do want to close out my remarks, and I would like to share my closeout in an in memoriam for Hoover Liddell Jr. I think I just saw, yeah, did I see Mrs. Marshall walk in? Oh, hi, Mrs. Marshall. Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, so much for sharing with me, well, for sharing with me all these beautiful pictures of Mr. Liddell. And, and I just want to really read some, a very brief obituary about him. So it is with deep sadness that on December 17th, 2024, Mr. Liddell passed away at the age of 84. He was born in Memphis, Tennessee, and moved to San Francisco in his late twenties, where he met and married his beloved Margaret Hodgkin. Together, they welcomed their daughter, Malika, in 1971. Mr. Liddell dedicated his career to education in San Francisco, serving as a teacher, principal, and eventually as assistant superintendent. He was passionate about empowering African-American students and creating meaningful change in the lives of our young people. He was also deeply passionate about climbing mountains and running. He climbed Mount Kilimadero, Mount Shasta, Mount Diablo, Mount Whitney, and Mount Rainier. He ran 11 marathons, including the New York Marathon. He ran countless races and was a regular participant in the San Francisco Beta Breakers. Above all, Mr. Liddell will be remembered for his selflessness and devotion to his family. And I truly believe Mr. Liddell's legacy of kindness, integrity, and compassion lives on in all the lives of the wonderful people he touched. He was an extraordinary man, and his San Francisco Unified School District family will forever be proud and grateful to have him lead all of our students and families through all of these years. Thank you to the Liddell family for sharing him with us, and thank you so much for offering us all these beautiful pictures of him and his beautiful life. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Sue. I just will take a point of privilege, the president add, that when I was a new principal almost 20 years ago, Hoover Liddell was one of the kindest and most caring mentors that one could ever ask for. He worked in the superintendent's office, and I remember being intimidated by all the higher-ups in the central office, but he always went out of his way to make, to listen, to make folks like us who worked in schools feel comfortable, and then to give us really good educational advice because he was a really wise and expert educator. And so just super grateful for him and his mentorship and, and also just wanted to honor his memory. So thank you for that, and I'll pass it over to our student delegates for your report.
Thank you, Superintendent Sue, for your report. On behalf of your student delegates, we would like to give a warm welcome to Jamie Huling, Parang Gupta, and Supriya Ray. We are excited to see what you have to offer for the students, and most importantly, we're looking forward to working with you all, notably with our Student Advisory Council. The Student Advisory Council, known as the SAC, is a cohort of high school leaders amongst the district, and we are always looking for guest speakers. So if this opportunity resonates with you, feel free to reach out, and we would love to have you guys featured at one of our meetings. Passing it on to Langston.
Hello, welcome, everyone. I want to welcome the new commissioners as well. Happy to see you. I want to start this report by, for the first time, as student delegates acknowledging one of the issues that we run into SAC this last year, with the lack of a full-time staff member. We're running into issues SAC fully realizing and fleshing out our vision for what we want to do for our SVSD students. And many things we want to do, like discuss our major topics, review SAC problems, are being, are becoming more and more difficult to tackle without a full-time position. All of these problems are becoming more and more of a leadership issue that the SAC has had to tackle. And our amazing advisor Judson has been there for us the entire time and has been a phenomenal voice for us and advisor for SAC. But the, the lack of a full-time position is definitely hitting the SAC. We have had our meetings cut in half. We've had half as many meetings in this amount of time as we were able to have last year. And the full-time position was originally supposed to be split, but due to things shifting around here in the district, it's then fallen solely onto Judson, who's done an amazing job with the hand that he's been given, but we are still feeling those effects of the multiple of his, like multiple responsibilities, multiple responsibilities that he has to have, which is leaving less time for SAC, which is making it difficult for SAC to function without a dedicated staff position.
Yeah, and adding on to Langston, the lack of attendance and structure coming from the SAC has led to meeting times being extended or decreased. So in order to like hold our meetings and take action, we need to have at least half of the SAC there. And since we don't have a supervisor who could pay full attention to the ways we operate, we are unable to hold meetings with the whole SAC. And because of that, we've had to compensate and do meetings online, which is an option we preferably don't want to resort to. However, despite our minimal time, we're still working on our annual youth summit. So in short, the Student Advisory Council, the SAC, holds an annual summit where they invite leaders across the district to enhance their leadership skills and meet students of different backgrounds. And we also hold our student delegate debate there. So like candidates could give a speech and present their endeavors for the following school year. And in order to make this possible, with the time we have, the cabinet and SAC representatives and alternatives have been working to connect with students, speakers, and local nonprofit organizations to prepare for the curation of this event. And we currently have a working date, as mentioned, since we don't have as much time, it's been hard to solidify that. But that said, it will take place sometime during April, and our slogan for this event will be Rise for Rights, which will be a place for leaders to collaborate on issues and educate students across the districts on issues affecting us in the current.
And finally, on a very exciting note, the survey that I was, I've been talking about at a couple of different meetings now, we're in the process of now finalizing it for its launch at the end of this month to then go into February. The official window will be announced by SAC in just a couple days. So we're really excited to hear from student voices, high school students, to really give SAC some direction this year and really allow us to formulate our vision for SAC and then incorporate some of that into what we're having here in board discussions to have SAC and SAC, high school-backed SAC voice come into our board discussions to really focus on our student outcomes and what we want to see in our school sites moving forward. And that concludes our report.
Thank you very much to both of you. We will now move to item F, public comment. So this is your last chance to submit a speaker card in the next 30 seconds. Again, please, if you, okay, I see a few coming in. Good. So what we'll, the way we'll do this is first, we're gonna have students' public comment, then we'll do public comment on agenda items, and then we'll do public comment on non-agenda items. Approximately, how many cards do we have now, Mr. Steele, roughly?
Probably about 32.
Thirty some, okay. So we will, that's about, let's say, 35 minutes. We will anticipate for in-person public comment, which will leave us 20 to 25 minutes for online public comment after that. As I've announced previously, we make every effort to start our board business by 8:00 PM so that board discussion and votes on important issues can happen before 10:00 PM. You know, and that's something that we've been trying to strike the right balance so that our meetings don't go late into the night, and we have meetings that people can't access. So that's, that's how we have been operating public comment. It seems to be working pretty well. And again, I think tonight it seems like we have sufficient time for the vast majority of the comments. So let's get started.
Great. Thank you, President Alexander. I do have one student comment card. Forgive me if I mispronounce it. It's Kushal.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Kushal Kumonon. I am a third grader at Yikwo Elementary School. I would like a permanent PE teacher on Fridays at my school so I can get better at soccer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And for everyone else, I'm gonna note that we have a timer up here. If you aren't an expert at this, it's right up there. You can check, you can see the timer. It's one minute per person, and please respect the timer. When you see it, when it goes off, there'll be beeping. Please wrap up. That's out of respect for everybody so that we can have equal time and make sure that everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, one minute each. I'm gonna call the first five speakers, so please come line up at the podium. Amy Zhang? Or? Andy Zhang? I'm sorry, I can't. Jerry Almunza? Bridget Dyer? M. Luna? And Bernice Casey?
我有信心文美有充分的经验和能力担当这个职位。Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jerry Almunza. I'm the treasurer of U.S.F. I'm also a parent of a student at Hoover. I was also a black mother and I'm also been a longtime educator. So wear many hats like many of you. I'm here today to strongly recommend that the new contract not be approved. As you all know, we've been struggling with financial solvency. We have an appointment, we are under watch. At this point, we cannot handle increasing central office. We had gotten a commitment on the deck that we were actually going to decrease the amount of people in central office. And at this point right now, this is, this would set a precedent. We understand that the board commissioners are not to micromanage the superintendent, but it does feel very disrespectful that a new position is being written that's a $275,000 position while educators are being asked to continue to give up the classrooms that don't have teachers and we are being told that they're going to lay off 500 of us. So if we want to hire your home, 6,000 of them is a high-end job too. Students that need teachers in front of them.
Thank you.
Hi, is this one? Okay. So you all are going to be looking at BVHM resolution about our right to return. There are some things missing from the resolution that I would like for you to all add in the resolution, consider and think of. One is, we need to talk about transportation. You cannot take a public school mainly transit community and then put them all in the woods. There's literally barely any, like, we need buses. We don't know, only need buses for students, we need buses for staff. Most of our staff lives in the east lane and takes BART because we live conveniently half a block away. I've been talking to some teachers and they said they're not sure if they're going to be able to go with BVHM to the new Luther Burbank school site because they depend on BART. BART is their livelihood, they don't drive in, they BART in, they don't have a car. So we need to think about public, I mean, we need to think about transportation that you all take care of for students and for staff. Please put this together, okay? The second thing also is you all need to make sure that Luther Burbank is tested for lead with the soil and the water. We have been facing too much lead at BVHM. Please test for lead and water.
Thank you.
For Commissioner Fisher, thank you so much for Resolution 61. I did want to add a few things to it. I want to emphasize that the most important thing is making sure that the population that attends BVHM, which is 76% underserved, has access to the transportation necessary to get to Luther Burbank. There's only one bus line. We have to take two buses to get there at the moment. It's at least 30 minutes if everything lined up perfectly, which it never does. It's also adding a huge commute for our teachers. The commute for the community is asking parents to take an hour out of their day twice to get their kids to school and that's not something an underserved community or an impoverished community can do. And the second thing that I'd like to say is that yes, I would love the, I think it's probably, seems obvious to test for lead and arsenic at Luther Burbank, given that we found it, I guess, twice at BVHM, it would be nice to know at least.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Bridget Dyer and I'm a parent at Buena Vista Horace Bend.
Hi, my name's Bernice Casey. I'm a parent of two children, one at Buena Vista and one at Lowell High School. Welcome new commissioners. I apologize to interpreters, but I am able to speak really fast and I have to speak on two issues. First, yesterday, Dr. Su talked about having to make some hard choices about balancing the budget. Please don't spend $275,000 that you don't have on a staff person. The child needs a PE teacher, they need staff. I always talk about my kids, but I want to talk about the kids that go to Buena Vista that have had no speech therapy. That's where your money needs to go. Instead of telling us to make hard choices, you are basically volunteers. I know how much you're getting here, you're donating your time, you have to make the hard decisions. $275,000 does not go to someone else here at 555 Franklin. Thank you so much Commissioner Fisher for acknowledging the struggles that we've had and hearing our community at Buena Vista for the ability for kids to go back. Again, please make sure we have transportation and a safe school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call, call the next five names. Please line up at the dais or at the podium. Joanna Lynn. Yang Yu Lei. Sarah Meskin. Josephine Zhao. And... Will Yee Lee.
Hi commissioners, I'm a parent at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. The job description for the head of communications and governance includes several critical responsibilities such as promoting connections across divisions and between central office and schools, correspondence to SFUSD staff and families, and proactive media placement. I support the board in wanting to ensure someone carries out this important work. We need effective leaders who will prevent costly and harmful errors born from lack of communication within the central office, who will engage in respectful and productive dialogue with staff and families, and who will proactively promote our wonderful schools so that more families enroll. Please address any concerns that people are rightfully raising right now about this role so that you can move forward with this important work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, is this one? Okay. So you all are going to be looking at BVHM resolution about our right to return. There are some things missing from the resolution that I would like for you to all add in the resolution, consider and think of. One is, we need to talk about transportation. You cannot take a public school mainly transit community and then put them all in the woods. There's literally barely any, like, we need buses. We don't know, only need buses for students, we need buses for staff. Most of our staff lives in the east lane and takes BART because we live conveniently half a block away. I've been talking to some teachers and they said they're not sure if they're going to be able to go with BVHM to the new Luther Burbank school site because they depend on BART. BART is their livelihood, they don't drive in, they BART in, they don't have a car. So we need to think about public, I mean, we need to think about transportation that you all take care of for students and for staff. Please put this together, okay? The second thing also is you all need to make sure that Luther Burbank is tested for lead with the soil and the water. We have been facing too much lead at BVHM. Please test for lead and water.
Thank you.
For Commissioner Fisher, thank you so much for Resolution 61. I did want to add a few things to it. I want to emphasize that the most important thing is making sure that the population that attends BVHM, which is 76% underserved, has access to the transportation necessary to get to Luther Burbank. There's only one bus line. We have to take two buses to get there at the moment. It's at least 30 minutes if everything lined up perfectly, which it never does. It's also adding a huge commute for our teachers. The commute for the community is asking parents to take an hour out of their day twice to get their kids to school and that's not something an underserved community or an impoverished community can do. And the second thing that I'd like to say is that yes, I would love the, I think it's probably, seems obvious to test for lead and arsenic at Luther Burbank, given that we found it, I guess, twice at BVHM, it would be nice to know at least.
Could you state your name, please?
My name is Bridget Dyer and I'm a parent at Buena Vista Horace Bend.
Hi, my name's Bernice Casey. I'm a parent of two children, one at Buena Vista and one at Lowell High School. Welcome new commissioners. I apologize to interpreters, but I am able to speak really fast and I have to speak on two issues. First, yesterday, Dr. Su talked about having to make some hard choices about balancing the budget. Please don't spend $275,000 that you don't have on a staff person. The child needs a PE teacher, they need staff. I always talk about my kids, but I want to talk about the kids that go to Buena Vista that have had no speech therapy. That's where your money needs to go. Instead of telling us to make hard choices, you are basically volunteers. I know how much you're getting here, you're donating your time, you have to make the hard decisions. $275,000 does not go to someone else here at 555 Franklin. Thank you so much Commissioner Fisher for acknowledging the struggles that we've had and hearing our community at Buena Vista for the ability for kids to go back. Again, please make sure we have transportation and a safe school. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call, call the next five names. Please line up at the dais or at the podium. Joanna Lynn. Yang Yu Lei. Sarah Meskin. I can't, I can't read this at all. Josephine Zhao.
Hi commissioners, I'm a parent at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. The job description for the head of communications and governance includes several critical responsibilities such as promoting connections across divisions and between central office and schools, correspondence to SFUSD staff and families, and proactive media placement. I support the board in wanting to ensure someone carries out this important work. We need effective leaders who will prevent costly and harmful errors born from lack of communication within the central office, who will engage in respectful and productive dialogue with staff and families, and who will proactively promote our wonderful schools so that more families enroll. Please address any concerns that people are rightfully raising right now about this role so that you can move forward with this important work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ayu. I have one child in the school district. I support the head of communication and governance position and I'm here today to support Ms. Hongmei Pang in taking up the position. I hope the Board of Education can approve the, her employment contract. I hope as a school district to know that our children and their education is very important to us and the school district is facing a critical moment to avoid repeating the same mistakes. The school district should be strengthening the communications and governance. As an Asian parent, I hope that the school district can use this position, connect with parents and overcome, provide equitable services and overcome language barriers. This position will help the school district work closely with diverse communities and build better bridges to the outside world. I believe that Hongmei Pang can, has the ability to do this job and her experience and ability shows that she can take on this position. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Meskin and I am the parent of a fourth grader at Daniel Webster and a sixth grader at James Lick. And I want to welcome the new commissioners. I hope that you all are, can be able to work together to improve a lot of the challenges that face our district, including improving the financial health of SF Unified. As a parent and public school teacher myself, I want to also express concern about this new position. I'm really struggling to understand how the district can justify funding such a high salary when our school buildings are in need of remodeling, when our district is struggling to pay educators a living wage, when we're struggling to find special education teachers, and when our students are in so many, in need of so many services. In addition, the description to me seems vague at best. I think I speak on behalf of a lot of parents when I say that the public really deserves to know how this is benefiting our students, how this is benefiting our educators, and how this is benefiting our staff. I hope that you consider the impact that this has on schools, teachers, and our kids and make a decision that's in the best interest of all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes for agenda items and I'll move on to non-agenda items. I'm going to call the first five.
各位各位 各位各位晚上好，各位家长好 我有三位小朋友在三文市校区读书的我的名字是阿怡我同时去支持冯兰美女士去担任这个职位希望各位可以通过她的雇佣合约那我们的小朋友他们的教育对我们很重要校区正在面临关键的时刻以免重蹈覆辙校区必须要加强那个资讯和整治那个领导能力身为亚裔家长我希望校区能够通过这个职位去进步与家长之间的联系的方式尤其去提供平等的服务黑服我们的语言障碍这个职位是能够帮助校区多元化的社区更加密切的合作同外界建立更好的桥梁推广三文市和校区的价值观和学生争取更好的教育机会我相信冯兰美女士担任这个工作之后能够充分地反映我们家长的全面意见向校区反映有足够的经验和能力去担当这个职位多谢大家 Thank you.
Good evening board commissioners, good evening families. I am a mom of three children who attend San Francisco Public Schools. My name is Ayu. I'm here today to support the position of head of communication and governance proposed on tonight's agenda and support Ms. Hongmei Pang in taking up the position. Hope the Board of Education can approve her employment contract. Our children and their education are very important to us. The school district is facing a critical moment and to avoid repeating the same mistakes, the school district should strengthen their communication and governance ability. As an Asian parent, I hope that a school district can use this position to improve the way it connects with parents, especially providing equitable services and overcoming language barriers. This position will help the school district work closely with their diverse communities, build better bridges with the external world, and promote the values of San Francisco Unified District, provide better education opportunities for students. I believe Ms. Hongmei Pang has the ability to take on this job and she has sufficient experience and ability to take on this position. Thank you.
A long time, issues from parents and our communities were not being reflected. The SFUSD policies were not being communicated enough, you know, down to the parents' level and our feedback was not shared back. Such as our need for equity and excellence. Such as supporting low admission and streamlining enrollment, supporting language pathways. It caused four years of turmoil, including school closure that went wrong. I hope you find a way to have fruitful engagement and collaboration to prevent future faux pas. And I hope you support governance. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the next five names. Please line up at the podium. William Patterson. Darcy Chan Blackburn. Sarah Saldana. Gina Sherr. And Subir Kumadon.
My name is Will Patterson. On January 3rd, the district offered over 100 families compensatory education with 33% of the services that were agreed to in the IEP. This amounted to a cut of approximately $5,000 per family for the special education services that they were agreed to in their IEP, which is legal contract. A few families were offered only 22 or 79 minutes by a clerical error and that's why I was alerted to this. That was only a few families. But I want to point out that the former superintendent got 100% of his severance package because he had an attorney, right? Why is it okay to reduce a contractual obligation to students with disabilities by a half a million dollars? You have 100 students who were denied $5,000 a piece of services, that's $500,000. Why is that okay? Because they do not have attorneys. I ask the board and the superintendent to rescind those offers to families and replace them with the full education they deserve. 22 hours of education is very different than 66. I teach dyslexic students. You can make a lot of progress in 66 hours. You can't do much in 22.
Darcy Chan Blackburn. I am a teacher at Sheridan Elementary School and I'm here to tell you some things that are happening there. The district has decided to take away a teacher next year so that we will be forced to have a kindergarten first, split grade level class. We, it is true that we have openings in our kinder classes, however, there is another factor at play. We have a family that moved out of San Francisco last year but returned and tried to re-enroll their children at our school. One is of kindergarten age. EPC turned them away saying that our kinder classes are full. We have openings. But it turns out that EPC has capped the enrollment of our kinders and will not send us any more students. Essentially, they've manipulated things so that there is no chance for us to have more students move up to first grade so that they can justify creating a K1 split. This is a situation that we know of. We can't help but wonder how long this practice has been taking place and if it has happened in past years. It clearly seems that you are leading us to a closure by having a K1, a 23, and a 45 split at our site. More to the point is, how are we serving our students? We're not giving them the education they deserve.
Hi, I'm Sarah Saldana, principal at Jean Parker Elementary and UASF member. School leaders are eager to share our perspectives to inform the staffing and budget plans. We understand that our central staffing allocation will decrease. It's a reality of the numbers. Like many schools, we have unique funding needs and opportunities at Jean Parker. Because of the needs of our specific students, we were awarded three grants, two from the state and one from the city, to use as our community best sees fit to meet the needs of the children in our care. These funds can help soften the blows that are coming for our babies. Those of us in this position want agency over how we use the grants awarded to our schools, including using them for positions we know we can fill. And we need to know early in the planning timeline that we will be allowed to do so to give as much assurance to our community as we can in these times. Thank you.
I'm Gina Sherr, reading specialist at Yucu. For over 20 years, the budgeting process assigned an average cost for a teacher or para. That cost came out of the site's budget. Last year, that changed to charging schools the actual cost. This has caused and will continue to cause age discrimination. A school with older experienced teachers in an out-of-classroom position may no longer be able to afford that person full-time and cut back the hours. Sites pay for general education pairs and reading specialist intervention teachers that have discretionary funds. Sites should want and be able to afford experienced people in these positions. A person's experience and skill directly influence how effectively they will be working with students. With this change, sites may not be able to afford the most qualified candidate. How long before sites are unable to hire the most qualified candidate because their years of experience may be unaffordable? This is age discrimination. Please consider averaging these costs so that sites will not be forced to discriminate based on a candidate's age. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Subir Kumadon. I'm a parent at Yucu Elementary. I'm a supporter of the Resource Alignment Initiative. I'm even one of the talking heads in the video. Keeping small schools and community together were mentioned as important criteria in the slides and the sessions I attended. So I was obviously disheartened to see a small community school, a blue ribbon school, included in that list that's known for its diversity, community, and academics. This year, despite the uncertainty, our scores have gone up, our grade school rating has gone up, but just this semester, in our third grade class alone, we lost three kids to private school. So I hope you can keep...
Hi, I'm Subir Kumadan. I'm a parent at Yikwo Elementary. I'm a supporter of the Resource Alignment Initiative. I'm even one of the talking heads in the video. Keeping small schools and community together were mentioned as important criteria in the slides and the sessions I attended. So I was obviously disheartened to see a small community school, a blue ribbon school, included in that list that's known for its diversity, community, and academics. This year, despite the uncertainty, our scores have gone up, our grade school rating has gone up. But just this semester, in our third grade class alone, we lost three kids to private school. So I hope you can keep sort of sight of the big picture. And when you work on the next criteria, you take small schools and tight-knit communities into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the next five names. Please come up to the podium. Anna Clafter, Andy Holinsky, Myra Quadros, Autumn Brown, Susan Fang Wong.
Hi. Hi, good evening. I'm Anna Clafter, president of UASF and principal at Independence High School. I'm here to demand that school leaders be brought in to develop the budgets for our school sites. A one-size-fits-all staffing model does not work with our varied schools and programs. Take Independence High, for example. We've been intentional in developing a model that serves a huge need for SFUSD. Last year, we had a 94% graduation rate with 100% of our Black and students with IEPs graduating. 100%. You don't get those results with a staffing model like at a traditional high school. You get that by providing what students need. SFUSD Guardrail says the superintendent will not allow resources to be allocated without transparently communicating how the allocations are sufficient and addressing equitable input and creating more equity and excellence in student outcomes. Site leaders know what schools need. It's time to bring us into the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Sue, and new and returning commissioners and student delegates. My name is Andy Holinsky, and I'm a supervisor of psychological services in our special ed department. And I'm also the secretary of United Administrators of San Francisco. This is my first time in my 19 years with SFUSD ever speaking at public comment in a board meeting. So I want to say that we understand that unprecedented reductions are just around the corner to achieve fiscal solvency and prevent a state takeover. At this critical time, we are deeply concerned about the lack of meaningful engagement from experienced site and central office leaders, those with real-world experience running public schools and central offices to ensure that the impact of any cuts are more than just numbers on a page. A one-size-fits-all staffing model and uniform reduction to central office support are not student-centered or diversity-driven, two of our core values.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Sue, commissioners, student delegates, and Mr. Steele. My name is Myra Quadros, and I am the current principal of New Traditions Elementary School and the vice president of UASF. Welcome to our new commissioners. I was able to attend your swearing-in ceremony and felt very inspired and motivated by your words last Friday. I hope that your actions align with your words. I'm here tonight to say that we, as site and central office leaders, understand large budget cuts are necessary. And we want to partner with the executive board and central office making these decisions so budget cuts are done with us and not to us. We have asked since the start of school to be partners, and yet we're still anxiously awaiting to be invited to any conversation. Please invite school and central office leaders to the table so we can together discuss the best way to allocate our budget. It'll be devastating to receive our budgets late on a Friday night with no opportunity to share our school contacts and the monies we already have secured to supplement the school needs. Invite us. We want to work with you, and you are welcome to my site anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Autumn Brown Gadibai. I am a parent at Leonard Flynn Elementary School. My kids are in fourth grade and kindergarten. And I also have the privilege of serving as the PTA president at Flynn. Flynn is a school on the Mission-Burnell border, serving 45% English language learners and 70% socioeconomically disadvantaged students. I'm here to share about Flynn because it's critical for the board to understand the needs and strengths of schools across our diverse city. Flynn is a microcosm of both the challenges and the opportunities within SFUSD. Flynn families are deeply committed to student success, from creating parent-led tutoring to ensure our students are passing the LPAC to advocating and replacing fixtures for clean water at our school. We have stepped up, and we have made sure that our grassroots efforts are making a difference for our students. What I want to urge is a few things in my 10 seconds left. Operations need to be on point. Student-centered budgeting needs to be happening. We have strategies to make sure that our billy students are passing their classes, and also a clear focus and vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Susan Fang Wong. I'm the parent of three alumni from SFUSD. They started at Alice Fang Yu, and they graduated from Balboa, Washington, and Lowell. But anyway, I'm happy to see new faces and hopefully new thinking at the school district. And I feel that at the minimum, the school district needs to work together to right the fiscal ship and to improve educational outcomes. We really need more high dosage tutoring. We need, I think, an outside audit of just everything fiscally that the school district does. It needs to be able to generate useful data, like if somebody's struggling with, a student is struggling with reading, then they should have scores in sort of real time to say, okay, they didn't master some parts of their phonics. So anyway, there's a lot of things the school district could do better. But I'm hopeful that in the future, we can all work together. Thank you.
Thank you. I have seven more cards I'm gonna call. The names now you can line up. Meredith Dodson, Chanel Blackwell, Stephanie Falkenstein, Victor Ward, Laura Kennedy, Virginia Marshall, and then Frank Lara.
Hi, Superintendent Sue, board commissioners, Meredith Dodson, mom of two SFUSD kiddos, executive director of SF Parent Coalition, and organizer for Equitable and Excellent Public Schools. I'm gonna shorten my generic comments so I can just comment on some of the things we're hearing from the school leaders. But we have a brand-new year before us and with it, a whole new opportunity for SFUSD to get things back on track for our students. We know there are huge obstacles facing us, and we're hopeful for the new board that you're gonna get things under control. We know things won't be easy, and we're already hearing this week from families about terrible cuts that are starting to make their way to schools. And so now I'll also add that it's very concerning to hear from these school site leaders and principals that they have not been incorporated into the planning process around the school staffing model. We know a lot of work was done last year around the school staffing model, but it's a different year, different leadership, different board, and these site leaders can't just be thrown something that is old from a former superintendent who you kicked out, or sorry, who left. And they need to be incorporated, and we need to hear from them what they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Falkenstein. I'm the parent of a third grader at Yikwo Elementary. As Dr. Maria Sue noted, we are just a few weeks away from the enrollment deadline. Before this deadline, I ask that SFUSD makes a statement to reduce the continued harm done to schools that were on the closure list. We have current and potential families afraid of the future of Yikwo. If SFUSD resumes a closure process, I would assume that it would truly be focused on fewer stronger schools and actual neighborhood schools. It would not, as in the case of Yikwo, close a blue ribbon school, send students to lower-performing schools academically and socially, emotionally across all student levels and focal groups, so less equitable schools, force families into cars in neighborhoods where more than half of households don't have a car, and over 80% of students walk to school. I would also assume it would not eliminate community schools from four adjacent neighborhoods of Nob Hill, Russian Hill, Upper Chinatown, and North Beach. Thank you.
Hi, Chanel Blackwell, and I just want to welcome the new board members, the three, and congratulations. And congratulations, Alexander, the fourth one, and Dr. Sue. And it's comforting to know that you're gonna make sure that the money, whatever's going on, that it's not gonna affect nationally, that we will, the students will get what they need. And that's when I'm gonna go back to student outcome, make sure that there will be student outcome, and make sure that I'm hearing about the money, and I'm hoping that this money, like, whatever money you do, use it wisely. Not waste any money from last year from consulting that didn't need to be have consultants, not waste that kind of money to make sure that students with IEPs and 504s do not be falling by the cracks. Because I do have a son that graduated in 2024. I don't want that to happen to him. And also, I have a son here now who is an eighth grader, and I want to make sure that he gets the resources that he needs along with the San Francisco Public Schools students. Thank you.
Board and superintendent, my name is Victor Ward. As you probably know, about one and a half years ago, the San Mateo County Board of Education sued Big Tech, Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, YouTube. But social media isn't going anywhere. People love it. Students love it. Even if something like TikTok gets banned, people will just go to a different platform. My suggestion is that educators offer an alternative, a social media just for schools, just for students. My company, Cruz Media, provides just that. And under the umbrella of Proposition 28, we have built a digital video yearbook where students get to upload their own pictures, their own videos, their own memories. And we built this platform specifically so that it could help both schools and districts generate their own revenue. After this meeting, I hope to briefly speak with you, Superintendent Sue, just to find out whom I can follow up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
We may be out of order. I don't know. Okay. Hello, I'm Laura. I am a parent to a kindergartner at Yikwo. I wanted to share a sign that my kindergartner drew. It says, "We love Yikwo." And in celebration of public schools, share that he and his other kindergartner classmates are now reading books as a daily assignment, including English language learners. We love Yikwo. We love our public schools. And so I want to share a quick welcome basket with some additional information you may not know about Yikwo. You already heard that we are a national blue ribbon school. We're one of six elementary schools in the district to receive this recognition in the last five years. It's not only for high academic performance, but also at closing the achievement gap. Number two, we're also one of six elementary schools across FSUSD that is supporting students with special, moderate to extensive needs in our special day classes. We have 20 to 30% of our students outside of that on IEPs. And lastly, Yikwo is short for Yikwo Alternative Elementary School. We have a rich history as being a small school by design. We are not under-enrolled. We are small by design, and it's working. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening to Commissioner Alexander, the returning commissioners. Welcome to the new commissioners. We loved your swearing-in last week. To our superintendent, Maria Sue, thank you for inviting Autumn Brown and me. We had a VIP seat, and we loved it. Thank you so much. To Mr. Justin Steele, who does all the hard work behind the scene, and to our student delegates. I have a special place in my heart for student delegates. I love every word you say at every board meeting. Continue. But I'm here to represent, to talk about my supervisor, Hoover Lydell. I have the blessing and the privilege to have an educator extraordinary as my supervisor for several years here in SFUSD. I went with him all over the city, from Malcolm X, where he taught a weekly math class, to the students who lived in public housing, to Lowell High School, where Andy Ishbashi hired him to work with African-American students at Lowell High School. If there was an issue in the weekend, we went there as well. He was my support person for the African-American honor roll for 16 years. On a Saturday, if I got a call from a parent who said, "Mrs. Marshall, my child's in special ed. They need these services for the serve money." He would say, "Oh, so I can't do it." Call Hoover. He said, "Don't worry about Virginia. I got it." So I have this bell in my hand. You know it from the playground, but also in the African-American community, this bell means a lot to us. Before social media, before X and Twitter and Facebook, when something happened in our town, my grandpa would go to our small town and ring the bell at the church. So I'm gonna ring this bell for Hoover Lydell, an extraordinary educator. I'm gonna ring this bell for Hoover Lydell, a wonderful son, a devoted husband, a loving father and grandfather. And I'm gonna ring this bell for Hoover Lydell, who enriched our lives so much here in San Francisco and the Bay Area as an extraordinary educator. Yeah! And we say thank you to Hoover Lydell, his daughter's online back in Maryland watching this. And Dr. Sue, I want you to know, she said your comments brought tears to her eyes. So thank you so much. They're gonna have a celebration in May. Hoover loved to run Beta Breakers. So please sign up for Beta Breakers. I'm gonna walk it. And then she will have a celebration of life that third weekend as well. I will keep you posted. Run Brown is online to make his comments virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. And before, thank you again, Ms. Marshall. And before you go, Frank, I just wanted to say, to remind folks that UESF, our educators' union, has a provision in their contract that actually provides additional time to address the board. So they don't adhere to the one-minute time limit for the UESF representative. Once Frank is done, then we'll move to online public comment for approximately 15 minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Lara.
Thank you, Board President. Evening, and thank you for that. That's a Virginia Marshall. The city has a lot of beautiful history. Evening, commissioners. Welcome to the new board as well. Paying a lot of respects to you, particularly those who have pledged their commitment to quality public schools and supporting our educators. I do kind of want to apologize because I would prefer to spend my time as an educator over 10 years and also in the union the last four years as the executive vice president of UESF to offer some context and maybe some words of wisdom, but unfortunately, that's not the case. So I apologize for my tone. I do want to express the concerns over the potential hire of another position for central office, not because it's an issue of money. I know we keep raising that. This district done tens of millions of dollars of unaccountable funds into construction, and has done that, and we've seen that through the notes. So it's not the issue of that. I do want to emphasize to our family what the big concern is, the spending of political capital. How much it takes to advocate for this particular resource? Families should highlight that and should be aware of that. That political capital is not being spent on your families. That political capital, when we're drowning in the classroom, that's not what's being spent. I want to note the silence around the issue of the staffing coming from the state advisor, state-appointed advisor. I've been to every board meeting. I listened to it. And every single board meeting, there was press release after press release about the financial situation, about how this is plummeting. And every time we tried to reach out to the district leadership about cost, it was like the state advisor, you know, again, we've mentioned, we said it's not an impartial thing because all of a sudden, leaks would come out to the media, would express the concerns, silence over this particular issue. So I point again to the political capital that families and students should be aware of where it's spent and where it's not spent. Our families must know that what we've been advocating from UESF standpoint is staffing the classroom because that's who serves the students. You can't come in, I'm telling you, as a Spanish language teacher, right now, there's 140 staff hired in the district. Families have demanded language programs. 70 of them, 50% of them are on emergency credential. You're not gonna fix language programs with one individual. This is a problem in leading a district to make sure people are held accountable. You don't do that by switching out one individual. To the new board, again, we appreciate the campaign that you ran, and I think the very need is an honesty to stay out of politics. And I don't think it's fair, neither does UESF think it's fair, that this vote gets presented to you because it's very political. We need honesty. We need the leadership. And even when the honesty is against us individually, if the union's making mistakes, let us be accountable, right? Tell us what we're doing wrong. Tell us where you need the collaboration. But what we don't want to see, what is extremely frustrating to see is what we see in happening at the frustration at a city level with a new election, right? We're now seeing that type of politic move into the district, right? So let's be clear. Whatever your vote is tonight, stay true to your principles. Stay true. I've been a teacher here 10 years. Everybody talks about a new, I've been seeing four or five superintendents, right? As much as we want things to be different, they stay the same. It takes a lot of courage to move in an opposite direction. So again, thank you so much for your time. Let's keep building with our families. Let's keep building with our students. We deserve better.
Thank you. So correction, we have one last. Thank you. So correction, we have one last in-person, non-agenda, correct, Mr. Steele?
Correct.
And then we'll move to online for 15 minutes.
Yes, join in.
Hi, thanks for coming back to me. I want to urge you to develop staffing models with these four things in mind. Support staff, such as social workers, student advisors, and librarians, are critical for schools to support student well-being, reduce attendance barriers, and help the district reach its third-grade literacy goals. These are critical positions at every school of every size. Smaller schools enable many schools' students to thrive, as we've heard tonight from a lot of families at Yikwo. And those students require full-time support every day, not only part of a day or on certain days of a week. You've heard a lot about how a one-size staffing model is not going to serve our diverse schools. I completely agree. Please give our schools the autonomy to decide what positions that they want to staff with their budget allocations. We have different needs and different sources of funds available to us, so give us the flexibility to meet our most critical needs. Third, site allocations must reflect the P funds that San Francisco voters dedicated to PE teachers, librarians, and art and music teachers. The district made cuts to these positions this school year, even though P funds do not come out of the general budget. Please restore the funding that remains available for these critical positions. And lastly, please allow PTOs to continue to fill these gaps that are otherwise going to fall through the cracks. When SFUSD fails to provide critical positions, regardless of where the money comes from,
Thank you.
students suffer. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes in-person public comment. President Alexander.
We're now moving on to virtual public comment. Please raise your hand if you care to speak. A gentle reminder, each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante su mano si usted quiere hacer un comentario público. Aquellas personas que quieren hacer su comentario tienen solamente un minuto. Gracias.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Happy New Year. This is Vanessa, the Executive Director for Parents of Public Schools of San Francisco. I wanted to express my congratulations to the principal of Independence for the remarkable achievements that she just noted. I think it's really important that the superintendent, when she does her introductory update, include what are the updates around student achievement that are happening, because there's a lot of good stuff happening in our public schools. Right now, I'm in DC talking to other city leaders about school closures. And I know that that's not going to happen in SFUSD. But one of the things that I'm really concerned about is not working with principals on their budgets. I have been a principal, and I know that it is probably the most hardest job to do, and really encourage the new superintendent to collaborate with the principals on the budgets for next year. As well as provide infrastructure around immigration. We have imminent threat for immigration from the Trump administration. And I encourage Dr. Sue to organize a work group so that we're monitoring what is happening within our school sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Shula? Shula? Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Wilson. I'm the parent of a fifth grader in the district and also work for SEIU Local 10 to 1. We represent custodians, clerks, school secretaries, school nutrition workers, and I was also an appointee for SEIU to the District Advisory Committee on Resource Alignment. I'm just wanted to speak about the new administrator position that's before you, and welcome to the new board members. And focus on two quick things. One is, this is about resources. You all know about the budget deficit. We've all been told 500 layoffs. It's unclear how the financial advisors think that this is okay to create this new administrator position. The district has committed to the public not to contribute to central office administrator bloat. And I want to echo what Jerry Amundsa said. We did hear that on the District Advisory Committee as well. But the, so one has to do with resources and the budget, the hard decisions, as folks referred to earlier, that are going to have to be made. But the other thing is about trust.
I'm so sorry to have to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Thank you. Reverend Brown?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to our superintendent, and to the audience. I'm sorry that I'm not able to be there this evening. However, conscious would not prevent me to fail to not by technology say to you, I want to thank the superintendent again for her commitment to help this African-American community deal with the egregious acts of hate crimes and downright bigotry and hateful activities in our school district. This is uncivilized, is not becoming of this city. And I know that we are going to get more allies who will fulfill what that good rule, that golden rule says, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Next, I want to acknowledge the outstanding, incredible services of one Hoover Laudette. Excuse me.
Reverend, thank you so much, Reverend Brown. That's
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, yeah. Hi, my name is Tom. I'm a special ed teacher, and so is my wife in the district, and we have two kids in the district. As a special education teacher, we're always told, give students what they need, right? If we don't have the minutes right now, then we're going to, you know, work as a team to figure it out. Give them what they need. This new position, I don't see how it's going to help students. What would help students is if we don't cut teachers, paraprofessionals, and try to find these sleazy way out. When you later debate these topics, are you going to be with the students and the staff? Or saying, "Trust us, trust us." It's too late to trust when you put it in backhanded like this. I've been checking the agenda, and it comes out, but I don't have time to read it when I'm teaching and trying to be a parent. So please, not just vote with your conscience, but vote for the students and those that are less fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison?
Hi, my name is Allison. I'm a high school parent in the district. I wanted to thank Superintendent Sue for your statement on the sanctuary district and also for sending a district representative to the Immigrant Rights Commission yesterday. I really look forward to hearing more from this board on how you'll be addressing incoming threats from this new administration, the threats to our immigrant families, the promised cuts to IDEA, and the threats to our trans kids, such as today when the House voted to ban trans students from sports. I know that you are under pressure to only discuss test scores at these meetings, but you all know that kids can't get high test scores when they're literally scared for their lives. Secondly, assuming the state fiscal advisor is listening, please give the SAC their staff member so our next generation of leaders can do their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff?
Hi, this is Cliff Ye. Dear Superintendent Sue and Commissioners, Happy New Year. Once again, my name is Cliff Ye, and I'm a parent of two elementary school students and a board member with the San Francisco Parent Coalition. I just want to acknowledge and thank you all for taking on this critical role at this time, especially given the state that SFUSD is in, where you're faced with many adaptive challenges that have a direct impact on our students. And I'm really invested in making sure that, you know, our district is one of the best, where every student at the district can thrive. So I look forward to hearing more about the progress over the next few months to ensure that student outcomes are at the center of your decision-making processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles? Charles?
Yes? I'm sorry. As a taxpayer, I have some comments. I welcome the new members, and I hope they bring fiscal stewardship. First, admit higher taxes are coming. When the politics get difficult, is a ballot measure planned for the November 2025 ballot for a $4 billion bond? Second, what percentage of the people who take early retirement or will get laid off this spring will be classroom teachers? It's 100%, I bet. And that fact will be hidden from the public, while the Board of Education rubber stamps another position for life at 555 Franklin. Third, please do not tell teachers or staff to interfere in ICE deportation actions by armed federal agents. People should not be forced to break federal law to be employed at SFUSD. Fourth, please do not make this next four years about Trump. A balanced budget and student outcomes should be your focus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rex? Rex, go ahead, please. Rianda?
Hi, this is Rex. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm
You want me to wait and?
Um, Rianda, I'm going to call you right after I call Rex. Go ahead, please, Rex.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I was on mute. Rex Ridgway. I am on the Student Success Fund Advisory Council, and I just want to step forward to say that how they have come up with the person to fill the position of the communications governess, Hongmei Peng. She was part of the student, she was part of the mayor stabilization team when Mayor Breed took over the $8.4 million of unallocated student success funds from last year. And Hongmei Peng was part of the group that made sure that on December 12th, that that $8.4 million was released to be able to be applied to by the school sites. So as we speak now, every school site can apply for either $100,000 or $150,000 of that $8.4 million. That was something that Hongmei Peng was part of making sure that happened. Also, when she was at the mayor's department, she would champion Proposition J. Proposition J passed, and now no student success funds can be touched by anybody else other than four students for the school sites. So I'm just here to say that I have dealt with her, and she has proven to me that she can do the job. Whether or not the position, if you guys vote for it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Rianda?
So good evening, Board Commissioners, and welcome to the new commissioners and Superintendent Sue and to our student delegates and everyone in attendance tonight. We're calling in tonight to offer our sincere condolences to Hoover Lydell and the family and to express our sincere gratitude for how he championed black students, families, and educators. And in his legacy, we ask, how are we recruiting, retaining black educators and black central office leaders? Also, we'd like to know how we are going to keep black students and students in general at the focus going forward. We understand that we are in a time of budget crisis, so if we can please ensure that everything that we do is student-centered and focused. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm Chris Claus, a sped teacher and department head at Washington High School. And unfortunately, my Google Doc is not accessible, so I'm going to have to do this live. I'm on a time limit, so. The district is asking that you approve a new position with a salary of over $200,000. I find it discouraging that the district is adding this expensive position when just today I was informed that the district is considering sending out pink slips to assistant principals. Every school needs their assistant principal. They attend IEPs, ensure that educator evaluations take place on schedule, support students, and communicate directly with families. Will this new position inflate the high-level district spending that is taking resources away from schools and deepening the district's fiscal rose? Where else are cuts planned? How many educators will be pink slipped to continue to fund redundant high-level administrative positions? Our sites know what they need. Why is control of site budgets being exerted by people not directly serving those communities? How is this centralized district control, community-based, and student-centered? We need fully-staffed schools, not cuts.
Thank you. Elliot?
Hi there. My name is Elliot Kenner Tam with SF Parents. I'm a parent of two SFUSD students, as well as a teacher in the district. I'm glad to see that the BOE has been taking the current budget crisis more seriously lately. With the new commissioners coming aboard, I am hopeful for further thoughtful progress here. I also want to remind the commissioners that they represent the voting public and, most importantly, the students and parents that rely on public education. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I will call Brandy and then Josephine. Brandy, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Brandy Markman, public school parent. I'm tired of families being gaslit and told we have to deal with hard choices and the prospect of educators being laid off at school sites at the same time when the superintendent wants to hire another direct report to work in the central office. I noticed the person who's being considered this position is a former direct report to Mayor London Breed, and Mayor Lurie did not bring her on to his team. SFUSD giving her a $275,000 a year job seems like cronyism, and the cronyism and machine politics in San Francisco are what failing our San Francisco students, families, and educators. That was on full display last week, and the Board of Ed swearing-in ceremony was, for the first time since I can remember, during the day at City Hall instead of at an SFUSD school so that our families and educators can attend. This sends a message to the growing disconnect between the school board and the community. To the board, please steward our tax, data ethically, and vote no on this appointment. The buck stops with you, and you should not be a rubber stamp. Also, so the public is aware, the San Francisco Coalition is
Thank you. I'm so sorry to have to interrupt you. That is your time. Thank you. Josephine?
Hi, my name is Josephine Zhao. Congratulations to Commissioners Huling, Gupta, and Ray. I'd like to call to your attention that emergency preparedness. Our schools are not prepared for fire and other disasters. Just like right after the passing of the irresponsible proposition to close the Great Highway, we are experiencing two earthquakes in a week, a tsunami warning, and an LA fire in one month, putting the West Side in danger. News just said that the city agency lapsed to inspect one-third of the school on emergency preparedness. It failed to include 26 facilities because it didn't know they existed. Please take our children's lives seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. President Alexander, that does conclude the amount of time allotted.
Thank you, everyone, and thanks so much for everyone who made comments. We're now going to move on to Part D, the annual organizational meeting. Like I said, we moved this from where it had been previously in the agenda. And so this part of the agenda has three parts. The re-adoption of the Board of Education rules and procedures, approving the ethics and conflict of interest statement, and then the election of board officers. But I'd like to open it by echoing the welcome that was given by several others to our new commissioners, to my new colleagues, Commissioner Ray. But I'd like to open it by echoing the welcome that was given um by several others to our new commissioners, to my new colleagues, Commissioner Ray, uh Commissioner Gupta and Commissioner Huling. I'm uh really excited to work with all three of you and glad that um you've joined the board and just feel like we have a really strong team uh all collectively here. Um and I uh am just feeling optimistic and hu- and hopeful for our work together. Um so let's get to work. Um and let's let's first uh adopt our rules and procedures. So uh as stipulated in the uh Board Policy nine ninety-one hundred, the board shall readopt its rules and uh rules and procedures at the first regular board meeting of each year. Thus, may I hear a motion and a second for annual readoption of the Board of Ed rules and procedures.
Motion.
Second.
All right, are there comments uh or any suggested edits or anything um from board members? Commissioner Fisher?
Um yes, thank you very much for, first of all, I wanna recognize the work that our previous board did um and especially under our previous board, previous board president Jenny Lamb to bring us into the student outcomes-focused governance, to really align us around student um outcomes, um be more student-centered in the work we did. Um having said that, um in rewriting a lot of our board rules, we swung our pendulum um very, very far in the other direction from what our meetings used to be. Uh there are some really, I think, great benefits to that, and I think we've seen some concerns. Um how we we keep hearing over and over that community members want additional ways to engage with us as a board. Um we had for a while last semester our um Fiscal and Operational Health Committee. We heard in public comment tonight some concern about the some of the things that are on consent agenda, and there's no real place to address a lot of this with the community right now. Um we have millions of dollars on our consent agenda that we're just gonna vote either yes, no, with no discussion because we don't have a facilities committee. Um and we are in a time of a huge budget crisis where we really need to be doing a lot to rebuild the public trust. So I'm hoping that we, as a board, as we as we vote to as we vote for these policies, we really have a lot of reflection we need to do to be stronger governors of the work. Um so I'm hoping that the appetite is amongst more than just me to maybe form an ad hoc committee on governance, something to take a look at how we're doing business, what's working, what's not, how we can better reflect the values of the community, how we can really make sure that our budget is working for our students, and every decision we're making is student-focused. Um and I think there's a lot of opportunity with this new board to do that work. So I'm I'm going to vote yes with the understanding that I think we have a lot of work to do, and these aren't quite what we need, but they are a really good start in getting us there.
Thanks, Commissioner Fisher, and just for the new board members and the public, um that we do have in our in our board rules the ability to form an ad hoc committee, and as she referenced, I think that would be the way if we wanted to make detailed revisions to these policies would be to create a committee. Those committees have to be uh time-limited. They have to have a clear outcome. Um and they were appointed by board leadership for a period of time, and then the then the committee would report back with the product of that work for the board to consider. So that would be kind of the methodology if folks wanted to make any kind of substantive changes. Are there other comments before we vote on this one? Commissioner Ray?
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. I also would be interested in revisiting some of our board rules and policies and procedures and talk, you know, discussing whether it's with a subcommittee or otherwise among all of us together, which ones we might want to update or change in order to be more responsive and effective. Thank you.
Any other comments? Great, well, let's we'll let our board leadership uh take that under consideration uh moving forward. So with that, um we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Student delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta? Commissioner Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. All right, the next item is approving our ethics and conflict of interest statement. So also, as part of our new approach to governance, um we uh adopted a new ethics and conflict of interest statement. We actually created an ad hoc committee on ethics, uh and that committee with which the two of us were on um researched uh different uh the the local and state and other ethics and conflict of interest requirements. And we created this um statement that I think everyone's had a chance to review, and we now have it as a as a practice and policy to review this and uh vote on it each year at the organizational meeting and then to um ask board members to sign it. So are there any, well, first of all, may I have a motion and a second on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. Are there uh comments uh from board members? Seeing none, uh roll call vote, please.
Great, thank you. Um student delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. And Mr. Steele, are you gonna collect our, should we pass these to you?
I will.
Okay, great. Well, maybe we can give them to you after. We can give them to you after. Okay. All right, and then the the more exciting part of the annual organizational meeting is the election of officers. So um we, as a board, we elect our president and vice president uh on an annual basis. The way our election procedure procedures work is that any commissioner may nominate another commissioner or themselves. Uh if a commissioner is nominated by a colleague, they have that commissioner who got nominated has to accept. Um I mean, they don't have to accept, but they have to accept in order to be considered, sorry. Um and nominations do not require a second. Uh commissioners may vote for themselves. Um once nominations are received, then we'll have some time to make comments, uh and then we will vote. Just a reminder that our rules, our new rules say that if uh that in order to be elected at this meeting, um board officers need to receive receive a supermajority or five of the seven votes. Um if for some reason that didn't happen, we would need to revote. If it was a four-three vote, we would have to revote at the next meeting. So I now declare nominations open for the president of the Board of Education for the year twenty twenty-five. Are there nominations?
I'd like to nominate uh Phil Kim. Phil served as a dedicated member of staff and courageously stepped up uh into serve as a board member in the middle of a tumultuous time. Uh I appreciate both his enthusiasm and current free time. Uh you know, as he helps create something I've heard staff, educators, and families ask for, more institutionalized processes, procedures. Uh so with that, I nominate Phil Kim as president.
And if there are no further nominations, seeing none, um I declare nominations closed. Um are there any comments before we vote? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you for the nomination, Commissioner Gupta. Um before we vote, I just wanted to thank both um current President Alexander and current Vice President Weissman Ward for your amazing leadership this year through I I think um the the phrase unprecedented times is gonna be on everyone's bingo card this year. Um but um if it were a drinking game, um we would all need uh liver uh pumping um after last year. So um uh I just wanted to thank you both very much for um uh your dedication. The I think you put in enough hours together for like ten board presidents and ten board vice presidents, and through everything, through all the adult-caused drama, you kept students at the center in all of your decision-making, and we're really um level-headed and just I don't think we would be in the um more stable and less chaotic position um if it hadn't been for the two of you working together to get us here. So I just really wanted to recognize your work and for you, President Alexander, to do that in an election year and with all the work that you do on behalf of the immigrant community too. Um did you get any sleep at all? Um but I I really appreciate everything, so thank you both.
Thank you. And um and so and I I would just wanna say I'm really grateful that um Commissioner Kim, well, actually, I didn't ask. Do you accept the nomination? I forgot to ask that part. He might, he might, after your comments, he may reject it, but I'm hoping he'll accept it.
Accept it now? I, yes.
Okay. Um and thank you for your willingness uh to serve um in in what is, as as she indicated, can be a very challenging role, but I think, you know, as a board, um you know, I think, again, I think we're really well-positioned to do this work together and to work together and have strong leadership. So are there other comments before we vote on president? Yeah, go.
Um so I'll make a comment about Commissioner Kim and then a comment about President, current President Alexander. So I wanna echo sort of the the thanks um from President Alexander about your willingness to to step up into a role that is time-consuming and challenging um and will require a lot. So the fact that you are willing to give your time and energy um to the board and to the district is is um really important, so thank you. Um and it's, we only actually served together in this this is my second stint as vice president. I I like to think of myself as a, being in the caretaker role sometimes. Um but it was, there was a lot that went on um after then-President Matamani resigned and you moved from vice president to president, and I transitioned into vice president. Um a lot of really, really hard decisions, a lot of hard conversations, sometimes hard conversations between the two of us. And one of the things that I think I was most grateful for was our ability to engage and dialogue and differ and always know that at the end of the day, we respected each other and each other's opinions deeply. Um and I think that those qualities are hard to find, especially in a space that can be so politicized and so about ego. Um and so uh I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity to to work with you in leadership.
Thank you likewise, very much likewise. Other comments?
It's, yeah, everything is unprecedented. So um likewise, just to acknowledge as well, um there have been uh incredible leaders before us sitting on this dais who have done incredible work to bring our district to where we are today. Um one of those people, I do think, um President Alexander, you um we we too had many a calls where we exchanged lively conversation, and every single time, without a doubt, um one thing I found so incredible about our working relationship is that you've uh you've looked at me, you've acknowledged me, and uh though we might have disagreed or uh we just saw things differently. Um I think there was always uh uh at the end of the day, an acknowledgement that we were in it for the right things, and we were aligned in wanting to do what's right. And so thank you for your leadership, um and I'll speak separately about you.
You're okay.
Um well, and that's why, and and Commissioner Kim, that's why I'm uh excited that you're willing to step up in this role and about your leadership. Because I do think, I think um differences of opinion and differences of view are actually a strength um when when people can do so with respect and and mutual in in relationship and and trust, right? And I think that's that's what I've experienced um with my. And that's what I've experienced in i- i- working with with you and with my other colleagues on the board. And I just hope as a board, we can really build on that and continue that. I think we all talked, those of us who spoke at the swearing-in on Friday, talked a lot about unity. And I've actually, in the last year, really experienced that on this board um in a powerful way. And I think I'm excited to to build on that and continue that um with all of you, so thank you, and no, does, did you wanna say something?
If I might, um President Alexander, I just wanna say I have really, really enjoyed getting to know you better over the last um months to year. And I have been just incredibly impressed by your dedication to the students of San Francisco, to the educators of San Francisco, to communities in San Francisco that are not always heard. And your dedication is also matched by an incredible, deep institutional knowledge of SFUSD, and I think that that knowledge comes from love, not just experience, that you really have gone to incredible lengths to get to know the city, the school, the systems, and how to pull different organizational levers in order to best serve our students and educators and schools. And so I look forward to continuing to work with you on the board, and I hope that um you find it in your heart to continue to give the new leadership um your expertise and experience and guidance as we move forward as a unified board.
Thank you, definitely, definitely. All right, let's vote.
Forgive me if I missed it. Do we move in seconds, item?
Uh we don't need to.
Oh, we don't need to, okay.
No.
Because it's just nominations and then, yeah.
Got it, right, thank you.
And he accepted. I heard him accept.
He gets accepted. Yeah, I did hear that.
Be clear, that happened.
Great, all right. So for Phil Kim as president? Uh of student delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes. All relations.
Excellent. Phil Kim has been elected president of the Board of Education for twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. I now declare nominations are open for the vice president of the Board of Education for the year twenty twenty-five. Vice President Weissman Ward?
As current vice president, I am thrilled to be able to nominate Commissioner Huling as potential future vice president. I'm saying potential because I know we need to vote on it. Um I believe that Commissioner Huling will be an excellent part of the BOE's leadership team. She is thoughtful. She is incredibly smart. Okay, that's just me keeping her humble. She's wicked smart. She's insightful. She is committed to dialogue and consensus. And during these challenging times, both locally and nationally, I feel confident and a sense of calm, knowing that Commissioner Huling, who is so fiercely committed to protecting and respecting the rights of those who have been historically marginalized and disenfranchised, will be at the helm. So from one public school mom to another public school mom, from one social justice attorney to another social justice attorney, I hope that you will accept this nomination. And to my fellow board members, I hope you will join me in voting for Commissioner Huling as vice president.
Are there other, seeing no other, oh, there is another nomination. No, okay. You're gonna nominate yours. No, no, I'm waiting, I'm gonna see. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none. Now, would you like to accept this nomination?
Thank you. I would accept that generous nomination.
Excellent. Further comments? Were you gonna make a comment, Commissioner Gupta?
I was, and I I'd just like to second everything that uh Commissioner Weissman Ward said. I have the great pleasure of working closely with Commissioner Huling over the last seven or eight months. Uh and Commissioner Huling is uh one of the most dedicated people I've seen to our students, to our families, to our educators, whip-smart as as indicated, and an incredible asset. And I I feel that the team of uh soon-to-be-president Kim, as well as uh Commissioner Huling as vice president, will be uh quite a duo with everything that Commissioner Kim brings, with his knowledge of uh of SFUSD and everything that Commissioner Huling brings with her knowledge, especially in these times where we have to protect our communities uh to this role. And I I hope that that serves as a complimentary duo, much like uh and and my thanks and gratitude to both you, Vice President Weissman Ward, and you, President Alexander, uh for everything you've done during this tumultuous time and and always keeping an open ear.
You're.
Go ahead. I am thrilled to be working potentially uh alongside you, uh Vice President Huling, uh Vice President-elect Huling, um nevertheless. Uh and wanted to just express my sincere gratitude to uh Commissioner Weissman Ward or Vice President Weissman Ward. Um and uh there is a unique uh time I feel like we're in right now, both in our country and our city, and there are few people that I can think of that I would turn to for pretty much all things, and it might actually be you sitting next to me right now. Um but uh your um your calm. But your, your calm and your steady hand has, has really kind of shifted energies in rooms. And that, I think, has, has done our board so much good service at times where things felt chaotic. And, and so thank you for your steadfast leadership and your focus and your generosity of time in, in, in knowing that you are doing incredible things on behalf of immigrant communities and families, and yet you still make the space to serve in this capacity. And so thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much, Vice President Weissman Ward. As I said earlier, it was an honor and privilege to serve in leadership with you. All right, if there's no other comments, we will vote.
Thank you for Jamie Huling as Vice President. Student Delegate Montgomery?
Yes.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Huling?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Alexander?
Yes.
Seven eyes, congratulations.
And I announce that Jamie Huling has been elected Vice President of the Board of Education for the year 2025. All right, we will now take a brief recess so that we can switch seats and we'll be back in a moment. The job starts now. That's what we were just saying.
All righty, I call this meeting back to order. Is that loud enough? Okay. Yeah. I want to begin by just sharing a few words. Thank you again to Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Weissman Ward for your stewardship of the board for the last four months. And thank you to my colleagues for your trust in me. I'm honored to do my part in leading this board and in partnership with our fabulous Superintendent, Dr. Sue, and in collaboration with our families, educators, staff and students. As a proud product of K-12 Public Schools, I've had the honor of serving as an educator for over a decade, as a teacher and leader at the local, state and national levels, including here in SFUSD. And it is a privilege to be here today and to serve this great city, our district and this board. We have a lot of work ahead of us, very challenging work that will require us to double down on our vision and values. And I'm hopeful that together we will continue to make the necessary shifts towards financial stability, operational excellence, and most importantly, to improve student outcomes. It's going to take all of us, clear-eyed and focused, committed to doing what it takes to build a world-class public school system that our students and families deserve. We have a responsibility to protect our immigrant and undocumented families, to surround our LGBTQ students with support, to attend to the academic and social emotional needs of our young people, and close persistent opportunity gaps. And we must do this in partnership with our educators, administrators, our friends at City Hall, the many community partners who are showing up for our kids every day, and always centering our families and students. I know that we can come together to do right by our students and families, and I thank you again for your trust and support in this, and I'm excited to do this work together. So thank you. With that said, we will move forward to item G1, 251-14SP1, approval of a new position, Head of Communications and Governance. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And at this time, I'll call on the superintendent, or does it need to read into the record?
Well, before I hand it over to our Associate Superintendent, Amy Bear, I wanted to just take a few minutes to share some words regarding this particular item, which is the approval of a new position named Head of Communications and Governance. I want to say that over the last three months, as I have gone out and visited schools and had conversations with educators and families and young people, you've heard me say that my three priorities are to balance our budget, make sure that our operational health are the best and strongest, and of course, rebuild trust with our community. During all these visits, I've heard very consistently the need for us to improve our community engagement and communications, and to deepen our collaboration as a school district with our community. As the district continues to invest in our ambitious goals to improve student outcomes, I am excited to work with this newly minted board and our leadership. I am bringing forward this position as a crucial next step to implementing the district's vision, values, goals and guardrails. I want to make it clear that this position will not increase the number of staff in the superintendent's office, nor will it increase the budget in the superintendent's office. We will be using unspent funds from vacant positions that are currently in the superintendent's office for this position. This position will support our governance work by creating better alignment across multiple touchpoints within and outside the district, particularly as it relates to our guardrails one and two, and five. Guardrail one, which requires the superintendent to work with our community as I, as we make difficult decisions together. Guardrail five requires the superintendent to collaborate with the city and the state and federal agencies and nonprofit agencies as we make difficult decisions together. I recognize that this is a sensitive time for this district as we grapple with resource constraints. That is why I am very, very intentional about making sure that this position will be budget neutral. And once again, not increasing positions within the superintendent's office, nor increasing the budget of the superintendent's office. I will also be providing additional information in the coming months about how I am going to restructure and reorganize the superintendent's office, as well as creating better efficiencies and increasing efficiencies within, within the district. We have been in consultation with our state advisor, and I am grateful for their support and advice on this proposal. I want to be clear that as we embark on this position, we did engage in an open recruitment process that Associate Superintendent Amy Bear will share a little bit more about. But I am really excited that we are able to bring back very high-quality former staffer of SFUSD to come back and continue to provide the support that our school district needs. As you all have heard in public comment, that the person that, in for item, for the next item, we've identified Hongmei Pang as the selected candidate for this position. And as you have also heard, that she is clearly a trusted and well-respected person within our community. Hongmei has spent the last decade in community and in public service of San Francisco Unified School District. She has a very strong track record in the community. She has agreed to return, and once again, it speaks to the fact that we are turning the curve and we are able to bring back very strong, high-quality leaders in the district. And so I definitely, I hope that we will be able to approve this position as well as the contract moving forward. I'm going to hand this over to our Associate Superintendent, Amy Bear, for, to share a little additional details about the position.
Thanks, Dr. Sue. So this item presents for approval, a new position on grade seven of the management salary schedule. It was publicly posted through our regular process. We had an interview process with two rounds, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the job description, the position or the posting.
At this time, I'll take comments from the board. If you want to just raise your hands, I'll keep track. Go for it, Lita. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Superintendent Sue, for your comments, and I really appreciate your feedback about being budget neutral. And as we heard so much during public comment tonight, there are a lot of concerns about the impact that this might have on the budget. One of the, the comments that stood out to me was transparency and accountability and the vagueness of this job description. So Ms. Bear, I actually would, I, I want to be mindful, my job as a commissioner, I have one employee, the superintendent. This position reports to you, not us, so I don't want to veer into micromanagement. But as it relates to being able to engage with the community and the impact on our goals and guardrails, if there's any additional information that you could share from that frame around the job duties that this person would have and how that would help us move forward with our goals and guardrails and, and better communicating with the public, I would, I would appreciate that.
So, so yes, the, this person's, regarding the governance part of the job, well, I just want to be clear, it's, although we call it the Head of Communications and Governance, what I really am envisioning is this person supporting our deep community engagement, which is a commitment that I've made to our parents, to our families, to our educators. So that's one. Number two, my vision as we move forward in restructuring my, the superintendent's office, is to be forward-thinking regarding the roles and duties that I would like for the office to continue, one of which is to ensure that we provide additional support to staff of this board, so to the board office staff. This, the, this person will provide that supervision and support to the board office staff, and hopefully continue to support our student leaders here on staff.
Let me see if there's other comments or questions from other board members. Commissioner Ray?
Good evening and thank you for being here, I really appreciate it. Thank you as well, Superintendent Sue. I have a number of questions, some of which were partially addressed by the staff responses to questions that commissioners posed when the draft agenda came out. I also have some additional questions that I wanted to ask about. And along those lines, can you describe for me, just, I don't know if that attachment has been made present now, but in the information I initially received, there wasn't a salary schedule attached to the contract? And perhaps that's been, you know, that's been made available since. But can you describe what the terms are of this position in terms of compensation or severance, for example, if the position were to be eliminated before the end of the 18-month term? And can you also, you know, give the public a sense of what sort of process you went through to arrive at this? Thank you.
So I can address the process. I believe that the contract questions would come in the next item.
That's fine, I can, I can hold off on that question till then.
So the, the position was publicly posted for five days, which is the minimum requirement. We had four applicants and three candidates were determined to have met the minimum qualifications, and they were selected for interview. The interview process had a first round panel of four employees of the district of diverse backgrounds and positions. They recommended two candidates to move forward for a second round. Round two was conducted by the superintendent, who did select one finalist. So that, that addresses the process question.
Before I ask anything else, I want to make sure that other folks have an opportunity. Thank you.
I'll come back around if there's more space. Commissioner Alexander?
Thanks, yeah, I have been, as my colleagues, I think, know, a longtime skeptic of bloated central office spending, upper management spending. So, so I have to admit, I approached, when I first heard about this, I was, I was quite skeptical. And I guess, I just want to, I just want to kind of confirm a couple of points, which I think I've already heard from the superintendent. But one is, in terms of the budget neutral aspect of it, especially moving forward, like I understand there's vacant positions this year to cover it, but in the budget moving forward, am I correct that in, as we go into the 25, 26 budget, you're gonna, it sounded like you were saying you were going to reorganize, reorganize the superintendent's office? And as part of that, you're going to show us how this is budget neutral or how you're paying for this essentially? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Because, yeah, I think that's a key piece for me, that, and I, and again, to the point of micromanaging, my instinct is to, to, you know, if the superintendent is spending X dollars in upper management, as long as that amount's not increasing, I'm not going to complain about how it's being used, right? If she decides I'd rather have one slightly higher-paid person in, in place of two slightly lower-paid people, or whatever it is, I guess my gut feeling would be, as long as you're spending less, then, then, then I, then I, I want to trust your judgment in that. So that's, am I correct in the sort of, basically that's what's happening here?
Yes, that's correct. And, and once again, I just want to emphasize that guardrails, guardrails one and five mandates that the superintendent engages with the community to ensure that we have deep community engagement as we make decisions.
Yeah.
And so I want to, this is why this position is so crucial for me to be successful.
Right, and it's clear that, I mean, I've worked with Hongmei Pang in her previous role in the district, and clear she has a skillset, I mean, you know, for, for that particular piece of work. So I get that 100%. But I guess my, my, I guess I'm really looking, I just finished by saying, I'm really looking forward to seeing kind of that reorg, because I think a lot of these questions around our effectiveness as a district actually have to do with, I mean, there's obviously the superintendent's leadership, but then there's this cascading of all the people that report to the superintendent. And then sort of the, what I've described as the bureaucratic stuff that happens below that, which, which frankly, and there's so many good people working in those roles, but there's like, sometimes it gets culturally stuck, and then the layers of bureaucracy create, actually make it harder often in terms of communication. So just looking forward to sort of moving forward, hearing how this is going to help contribute to an improvement there. Thank you.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Once again, thank you, Maria Sue, for your clarification. However, I'm still facing some disconnects with this position. I understand that you, as our new superintendent, could benefit from the head of communications and governance position, especially when it comes to giving you understanding of what our district needs and building communication across the board. However, what about the over 48,000 students across the district who are left without teachers? What about the educators who are struggling financially and now have the fear of losing their positions due to the implementation of this position? How is this position going to benefit students with what they need right now? In short, an educator who could be present and administration that could continue supporting students in ways that they should. Also, what's considered unspent funding? If we don't have enough funding to provide for special education students or to even keep schools open, where is this funding coming from? We, as a whole, are students of the future, educators shaping the next generation, and most importantly, people with needs that have not been met. We're currently in a budget deficit, and yet we're putting money into a position that could be used towards student needs. I believe that the attention should be focused on student outcomes rather than another position. And at the end of the day, we also have a whole communication team within SFUSD. We have the whole Board of Education sitting here right now. We have SFUSD staff members, students, parents and teachers who continuously vocalize which direction we need to be led in. So I believe that we need to finally hear each other's needs, whether it regards budget cuts or taking away from students' resources, and put our focus there. You also mentioned recently that this position could make your term more successful, but what about student success? I wholeheartedly believe that this position is not needed.
Thank you, Student Delegate Lamb, for those comments. I hear your frustration and I hear your concerns. I will say that part of this, the role of this position is to ensure deeper connection with our local, state and federal agencies, as well as our philanthropic partners. That's how we're going to be able to work with other jurisdictions and potential philanthropic partners to support our district. However, that is a long However, that is a long-term strategy. It, it takes time to build partnerships with all those entities, but we have to start. And that's why I believe that this position will, will help us move towards that. And, and I commit to you, because I hear the fear as well, of just what would that mean for our classrooms, what will that mean for our students? I commit to you to, to work really closely with our entire executive team, to, to turn over every single rock to try to find the resources necessary to keep our classrooms filled. In order to do that, we need to work closely with our local, state, and federal, and philanthropic agencies.
Could I ask one more question? How is this gonna benefit students with what they need in the current?
Once again, as we build philanthropic partners to fundraise, to bring in more resources and funding to the school district, those dollars can then translate right into the classrooms.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Montgomery? Commissioner Student Delegate Montgomery?
Thank you. I definitely want to piggyback off of what my fellow student delegate said, and I just kind of want to, clarification-wise, this is sort of more of like a connectivity position to make us more interconnected, easily streamline things moving through the district and locally with the city.
Thank you Student Delegate for that question. Yes and no. So I believe that we need, we can do much better in ensuring that there's, there's the full communication loop happens. I believe that we need to do better in engaging with our different focal populations in the city, as well as our students. The other part of the job, which is the governance part of the job, is that we need to do a better job in building deeper relationships with our state, federal, local, and philanthropic partners. And so this role is a combination of two big roles together. And, and so it's, it's not just day-to-day communications, it's going to be around deep community engagement, as well as building those relationships that honestly SFUSD truly, truly needs right now.
And then just a really quick follow-up, what does that look like as a concrete example moving forward? How do we, how would students, staff, in school sites every day see that then moving forward?
Well, on the governance side, it would be making sure that we are in deep, regular communications with both our local, state, federal agencies, as, as we're rolling out, say protections to prevent ICE raids at our schools, or to advocate for additional dollars at the state level for mental health services, or to ensure that, that our state level understand the importance of the literacy curriculum that we have here at SFUSD, or to know that we need more community schools funding. So that's, that's a direct correlation to what this person can do at the state level that will come down and support us in terms of funding at the, within our district, and that will go into the classroom.
Commissioner Gupta?
Thank you President Kim. So first, I want to acknowledge the public comment that's been given, I know sometimes, especially having been on the opposite end, you speak into the microphone, you're told you have a minute, and you, you don't know if you're just speaking into the void. So know that we hear you, and we hear that concern, and that, that concern certainly sits, sits with us. I know for, for this position, you know, I certainly have felt a bit disillusioned in the past with some of the communication, and I say that as a parent, I feel like we only have to look at the last two months with the resource alignment initiative, and not to pick on our staff. I mean, I was on the outside, but, I mean, that, that would have taken an expert crisis communicator in order to handle that, just given how much it was just, you know, stuff on top of stuff on top of stuff, and I'm just using stuff in that, but it just, it was not, it was, it was clear that we needed someone that was an expert, and I, I just, it was, it was disheartening at that time. So I am glad that, that there is someone at a, at a high-skilled level that, that may be coming into this. I guess to pick up on the process outputs that you were just talking about Superintendent Sue, how will you know? I mean, I understand this position will take time to get going, to understand if it's being successful, but, you know, how will you know this is successful, say, within a year or two? Is there, and forgive my ignorance, you know, ask for grace as the new commissioner, but is there a family survey you envision? Is it, does it manifest in, you know, greater fundraising that, that we are receiving as SFUSD?
Thank you Commissioner Gupta for the question. Well, I think number one, how will I know right away is that we're hiring a person that has been a former staff, and so there's, there's very little ramp-up time, it's gonna be a person who's gonna come in and, and be ready to go on day one. This person has already established relationships on the city side with lots of our city departments, and so there will be, there's already deep relationships, so therefore, a phone call can be made to a certain department to try to move an obstacle that, that we're hearing from students or in the classroom that's happening. We can, we can feel that right away. In terms of future benchmarks, yes, bringing in additional resources into the district is exactly what we need right now, and there are lots of grants that are out there on the state level, on the federal level, and potential partnerships that we should definitely build in the philanthropic community, and we need additional staff to do that.
Are there any of the commissioners who would like to ask a question before I circle back, folks? Commissioner Ray? I think so, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I do have some additional questions. Couple of things I wanted to ask is, I understand from what Superintendent Sue said that this position is not actually going to be addressing governance, although that is in the title of the position, if I'm understanding correctly, it is essentially external relations and work with the board office. So I want to make sure that that is a correct understanding of, of what the position is.
That is correct.
Okay. So a follow-on question to that then, relates to the board office, and one of the responses that staff provided was that board operations and governance were up to the board, specifically the board president. How does this position, can you explain how this position affects the board? Like what aspects of it affect the board, and what consultation, if any, was there with members of the board? Thank you.
So my desire for this, for this position is, moving forward, this position will assume the supervision of the, the staff of the board. And so as, as the staff of the board, this person will be working with leadership, the new leadership of the board, in, in, in making sure that the board continues to also meet the vision, values, goals, and guardrails. When I was thinking about having, creating this position, I did talk to our board president, who, as he shared, had concerns, and we talked through those concerns, which is why we made sure that the scope of the position was, was, was that broad, that it was around external affairs, it was around ensuring that we were going to be able to meet both guardrails one and guardrails five, that we are all going to be held accountable to those two guardrails.
May I ask additional questions?
Let me just see if there's other, other questions as well. Yeah. Commissioner Alexander?
Well, I was just gonna come in on the board governance piece, I do think there's a, that, that is one of the areas where I, I think there's, there's some areas where I think I can see that we need additional support at a high level, which is why, sort of like I said, I had this initial skepticism, still am skeptical of additional upper management positions, to be honest, but I think this one, and again, I'm looking forward to seeing other reductions at that level, and this particular one makes sense to me in the sense of the need for strategic communications, both internal and external, as the superintendent's talking about, but the other piece that was just discussed was around board governance, where we've seen, one of the things I had the privilege of doing last year was, was in, as board president, talking to board presidents and vice presidents from around the country, particularly ones that were doing the type of similar student outcomes-focused governance, and seeing the level of capacity they had of staff support, not necessarily in lots of people, but people that had a high level of understanding to be able to support good, effective, you know, governance. When I say governance, I'm not trying to use some like obfuscating term, I mean actually holding the superintendent and staff accountable to students learning more, right? I mean, that's basically what we're trying to do. And so to have that level of expertise there, I think is really valuable. Bringing in more resources makes a lot of sense to me, and the strategic communication piece, so those, to me, as in my role as board leadership, those do seem like areas of growth or need at a high level in the district. I don't know if that makes sense to colleagues, but...
Commissioner Fisher?
I appreciate this conversation, everyone. I would like to remind us all and the public as well that we are both a county office of education and an LEA, Local Education Agency. It's very rare, very unique, there's only a couple of us in the state, and we're the only one of our size, and very often districts can go to the county office of ed for the governance help, for the, you know, for, for some of the work that this position will hopefully do. We do not have that luxury, and so I think, I'm hoping that's, I talked earlier about the desire for better understanding our governance work, and I think that's part of it, teasing apart our county office of ed functions from our school district functions. I also do want to raise, especially when it does come to our governance structure, when we as the board have the superintendent reporting to us, yet our staff that's responsible for carrying out our data requests and, and some of the work we have to do, actually reports to our employee instead of us, in times when there is disagreement between the board and the superintendent, not that that's ever happened, and not that that's ever happened recently, but there can be a little bit of a conflict of interest there. And so I really want to name that, and so I'm hoping superintendent, as part of your reorg and your leadership work, will look at that. There are many other districts of our size where instead of board, staff, reporting to the superintendent's office, they report to the legal department, for example, because we have a dotted line connection into legal. And so that could potentially be some of the work, the governance work we do, is benchmarking to the need of deliverables, if we're gonna have an ad hoc committee or anything like that, making sure that, you know, we benchmark how other effective districts, large urban districts, govern effectively. You know, we should benchmark and see what other successful models are out there, that might even help with your leadership reorgs as well.
Thank you Commissioner Fisher. At this time, I just want to ask if there are questions that will help to inform a decision by a board member? If not, I think we would like to just move forward to a vote.
Yeah. I'm sorry Commissioner Kim, but I do have a question.
Would it be possible just to synthesize your questions as much, just for time purposes?
Absolutely. So, looking at this on the agenda, and being asked to make a decision on a position to be created and filled in the same board meeting, is fundamentally troubling to me as a matter of, of good governance and practice, so I wanted to name that. But I think that we want to be as transparent as we possibly can be in order to, you know, inspire the trust and earn the trust of the public, so I'm concerned on that ground. And one of the discrepancies that I've seen, for instance, is that sites have been told that unspent funds go to reduce the deficit, and ultimately, the staff response on this was that unspent funds were gonna be used to fund this position. And we do have other folks who do communications, and I completely agree that we need better communications, we clearly do, but I'm troubled by how this has come about, and by the discrepancy between what school sites are told, and then what, you know, what we are doing at a higher level as well. I feel like, so I mean, I guess I'd like to know, you know, what response, if any, you have on that, and whether we're continuing to tell school sites that unspent funds are going to the deficit, and how we might account for this position in some other way than just turning unspent funds over to the position. Thank you.
So once again, the scope of the position is, is quite broad, it includes community engagement, communications, as well as the relationship, the external relationships with our city, the state, federal agencies, as well as philanthropic partners. So the scope of that is quite large, so one. And, and then in terms of the need for this position, as you shared, Commissioner Ray, we, we need to do a better job at engaging, with engaging with our community, engaging with our families, engaging with our young people. So that's why I feel like it's really important to have this, this position, to make sure that as we hear from our students, from our families, from our educators, what their needs are, we will be then able to translate that, to translate that into conversations when, when this person, and hopefully myself, will be having at the local level, at the state level, at the federal level, with philanthropic partners, about what we need in this district for us to be successful. As this person helped with bringing in additional resources, I believe that those resources will be able to help compensate for the salary of this person.
At this time, I'd like to move forward to roll call vote. Mr. Steele?
Yes, thank you. On the new position, head of communications and governance, Student Delegate Montgomery?
No.
Student Delegate Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Fisher? No, we do the vice president, president last.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Healy? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. Sorry, I got the, my old list here, all right. One second. Should I start over? Or, okay, all right, okay. So Commissioner Kim, excuse me, Commissioner Ray?
No.
Commissioner Wiesberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Six eyes, passes.
Thank you, I'll move to item G2251-14SP2, employment contracts for district executive head of governance and communication. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Seconded.
Great, I'll turn to the superintendent, or does I need to read this into the record?
This item presents for your approval, the employment contract for Hongmei Pang as the head of communications and governance, the position that you just approved.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Brown Act, before the board actually votes on a employment agreement for any executive position, we are required to orally report the substantive terms of the agreement. And so for the position of head of, head of communications and governance, the proposed employment agreement sets out the terms starting on January 29th, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Salary is grade seven, step four of the management salary schedule, the work year, vacation, health benefits are the same as all management employees, and that is the mandatory readout for the, for the employment agreement for the head of communications and governance.
Thank you, and just to note, we had excused the student delegates at 9:00, so just to note that. I will turn to comments from the board. Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
I, when I was the chair of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, I had the distinct pleasure and honor of working with Ms. Hungmei Ping as when she was in her first spin with the district. And during the pandemic, I don't know how many of you remember community engagement via thought partner. But even just using the term thought partner brings up PTSD for many of us. So kind of. But through that, Hungmei Pang, even with many of the difficulties, was able to really help keep so many of our family and community partners engaged and active and address our questions and concerns and was especially during such a tough time for so many families, definitely a bright spot in leadership. And so Superintendent Sue, I was really excited to see her name listed here as the finalist. I'm sure you had many other great candidates who would have also done wonderful things, but I just want to honor her previous experience and and the work that she really did with so many of of our our families and and community partners. So I I have very high hopes for what this, what Hungmei two point O will be like in in your leadership team. So thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Thank you. Just briefly echoing Commissioner Fisher, I think in in addition to the the skill set that she will bring, I think that specifically also background in organizing around immigrants' rights, around working with communities that we know have been and will continue to be targeted is really important. And so to have someone in the position who understands the need to protect every single one of our S F U S D community members, including our students and our our educators is is also really important. So I think that lends that focus on justice as she engages and with with community and with philanthropy and with the state and local entities will be very important. So.
Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. Employment contract for head of governance and communications.
So sorry, Mr. Steele. Sorry for that, Miss Commissioner Ray. Go for it.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to follow up on the question that I had asked earlier about the salary schedule. I want to be sure that we're informing the public as much as possible for purposes of transparency. And I see that it says a copy of the salary schedule is attached as attachment A. I didn't see it on mine. So if you could let folks know you know what the salary would be in such a case and any severance terms, that would be great. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing, but I never did see an attachment. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Yeah, our our salary schedules are all public and they're all online. They can be accessed on our labor relations page. And so I apologize that it's not linked in this agenda. Namita did read out the financial terms of the contract. And so, you know, we can talk about that. It's step seven. Sorry, grade seven, step four on the management salary schedule. So the salary is two hundred twenty thousand eight hundred forty one dollars annually. You asked about the buyout provision and there is a six month buyout provision in the case of release. And you asked whether that was typical in an eighteen month contract. It's it's typical for San Francisco. All of our employment contracts for executives have a six month buyout clause, even on our one year contracts. I wouldn't say that's typical for other educational institutions, but that is the typical San Francisco unified contract.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Barrett. Let's resume the roll call vote. Mr. Steele, when you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, President Kim. On the employment contract of head of governance and communications. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Healy? Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm releasing this. Commissioner Ray?
Yes. But I note that I voted no on the position due for the reasons I stated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven eyes.
Moving to item three, two, five, one dash one, four, S P three, resolution appointing the twenty twenty four Proposition A Bond Oversight Committee. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And I'll turn to the superintendent or does it need to read this into the record?
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Sue. Good evening, commissioners, and welcome to the new commissioners of the board. My name is Lisina E. Berry, and I'm the director of the bond program. Tonight, we are here contextually to talk about next steps in the twenty twenty four bond. I think all of the commissioners are aware because for new commissioners, we were able to brief each of you as candidates, that the San Francisco voters did approve a seven hundred ninety million dollar authorization of new bond funds for S F U S D to continue its capital program. Tonight, we can move to the second slide. Tonight, we, the item before you is to form the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for the twenty twenty four bond. I wanted to take the opportunity to provide just a little bit more context. I will be a fixture here at monthly regular meetings for the next several months as we really establish the twenty twenty four bond and get it going and get into our first bond issuance of this new authorization. Tonight, the resolution, as I said, is to form the Independent Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. This is a requirement by the California Education Code. In December, the prior board approved a resolution declaring the results, basically just publicly, the Board of Education saying that the election happened and that the voters passed it. And so that's already been approved. And then within sixty days of approving that resolution, the board must also establish the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. So the the resolution that's on the agenda tonight does that. And just by note, the twenty sixteen C B O C does operate under a set of bylaws. Bylaws are not required by the Education Code, but are a practice that many C B O Cs will use. And this, the the bylaws themselves to inform this committee are not part of this resolution, but will be will follow at a subsequent meeting of the board. Go ahead to the next slide. Just as a refresher, again, an opportunity for new board members to to be refreshed on what this bond entails. The total authorization is seven hundred ninety million. The categories are, as shown here, modernization, core functionality, student nutrition services, technology upgrades, schoolyard outdoor learning and security. Sorry, excuse me. The numbers to the right are not documented in the bond measure language itself, but are the allocations that we've been discussing publicly for the last couple of years as bond planning has moved forward. We are now in the process of working towards selection of sites where these projects will happen. On the next slide, it's also a piece of the public information from the bond planning process where we attempted to put a number, try to imagine what we could do with the money as described in the prior slide by investment category. These are not firm commitments. This is an idea of what you could buy generally with with that amount of money without having scoped any of these projects yet. And so just a refresher that this is what we said we would do and that we intend, you know, to meet at least in spirit as we move forward to implementation. Important to know, as we move into site selection, that we do have many projects underway now. And this is really for two reasons. One, because construction was expensive in the twenty sixteen bond and some projects did go over budget. And the other reason is because in anticipation of the twenty twenty four bond, we initiated design on several projects that they would be sort of shovel ready when the twenty twenty four bond passed. We like to have a consistent construction program that keeps our expenditures high. If we slow down construction, the contractors move elsewhere, it's more difficult for us to mobilize the program. And so this is generally good practice for large districts that have kind of serial bond programs. The projects that are in design and requiring additional funds from the twenty twenty four bond are listed here, including West Portal Elementary and Denman Middle School, both of which, well, West Portal is under construction. The construction contract for Denman Middle School is on the agenda, the consent calendar tonight. One of the divorced man K eight, which we expect to bid for summer construction start. Thurgood Marshall High School and Lincoln High School have each have independent scopes of work that are in design. And then we are completing P A system improvements at at various sites across the district as part of our security commitments and that program. And so we anticipate coming back to the board to present the site selection, the sites that have been selected for modernization projects as part of the year, this year's facilities master plan update, which in keeping with last year would be in April. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I'll open it up for comments from commissioners or questions.
I have one clarifying question. Am I correct to understand that in continuing the twenty sixteen C B O C to the twenty twenty four C B O C, we are essentially allowing the previous body to serve as the same the same role as a governing body for the new bond and extending the body, but we are not extending the term of service of any individual currently on the C B O C?
Yes, and that was a change that we sort of discussed jointly with the C B O C. There had been different language proposed in a draft resolution. But it was important to C B O C members that there be sort of a staggered ending of C B O C terms. And so they preferred to maintain their current positions and sunsetting of those positions. Currently, C B O C members are allowed three terms. No one is in their third term. The most senior members in terms of, you know, just how many, how long they've been on the C B O C are in the middle of their, or I guess there's a couple that are at the end of their second term. So unless people left voluntarily for other commitments, there would be no change for the next several years.
Commissioner Alexander?
Just a clarifying question, because I just I had a request that I had forwarded to staff about someone who wanted to join the C B O C. Are there going to be new openings coming up?
So one former member of the C B O C has stepped off the body. So in accordance with the number of positions that the Board of Education has approved previously, there would be one vacancy. The ed code requires a minimum of seven members. The board decides how many members there should be. So if you wanted to have a hundred members, please, I hope that you don't, but you could do that. And so the way that we have been handling membership over the last several rounds of kind of applications, and this is really, this was guided by former Superintendent Wayne, was to have kind of a committee of it was two staff members, two C B O C members, and then two independent members who actually are now our C D E advisors to just sort of present neutral bodies. It's really the job of the board to appoint members. The superintendent would recommend sort of in this format at the board meeting. And so I really, we would be looking for direction from the superintendent and the board leadership to figure out how we would continue to do this in the future. Did that answer your question?
Well, no, I was just trying, it was a more technical question in a way, because I just got a request and I wasn't even sure if there was space and where to direct the person. I sent it to staff and just hadn't gotten a response. This was several weeks ago. So I just wasn't sure what was going on. That was, it was more of a can people join now or no? There there is, it sounds like there may be a vacancy, yes?
There is currently a vacancy on the C B O C, yes. And we have probably nine, nine people who have expressed interest through the application that's on our
Oh, okay. So that is happening.
Yeah, yes.
I think that's what I was asking. That's going on right now.
Yes, and we have really been trying to, you know, do these logistical items, setting it up, kind of establishing the bylaws and then
Got it. Now you're gonna go through the, you're gonna do that.
Yeah, because we are above our statutory minimum. So it's sort of like, I don't know, these items seem more pressing, but.
No, no, that's great. I was, sorry, I just didn't know. I was trying to figure out what was going on.
Commissioner Fisher?
To follow that vein of thought, I mean, we have other committees like the P F C A C, where we each appoint two members to the committee. I'm I'm wondering why with the C B O C, we don't all have certain appointments.
Maybe our new head of governance can help coordinate all these appointments and this processes so that we can have a thoughtful.
What a, wow. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander. I love this line of thinking. I I think my, first of all, I want to step back and thank the voters for passing Prop A. Because my goodness, you know, we have a lot of work that needs to be done and this is going to be fantastic. I think my questions are really about in rewriting the bylaws, who's going to be the ultimate decision maker and how the bylaws get rewritten? Is that going to be committee members? Is it going to be staff? I I think I just, especially when it comes to such oversight, like who, you know, what is the decision making a process? You know, is there a matrix that's followed or a rubric as far as if we have more members than appointment, who gets selected? I would just like to see a little bit more transparency moving forward in the process. But as Commissioner Alexander pointed out, maybe some of this could be clarified through our governance work, but seven hundred and ninety two million dollars is not an insignificant amount of money. So making sure that we have a system set up that is rebuilding public trust and spending this money wisely. I volunteered down at Sheridan Elementary School, which was recently renovated and yeah, I volunteer in a kindergarten classroom with a leaky roof. So just like making sure we're holding our contractors accountable to doing the work they promise.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is is so important and and the transparency and accountability into all of these millions of dollars. It's important in meeting our guardrails.
Thank you. Did you want to ask a question as well or? No.
I think there were like three questions in there. I mean, do you want me to tease them out instead of my rant there? I'm happy to. And I'm not necessarily expecting an answer right now.
Okay.
So I'll rephrase them as wonderings, I guess. How about that? To be tied up into work to be done by this board.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner, well, is there something that you wanted to respond to right now? Commissioner Ray?
Just following up on Commissioner Fisher's comments. Can you can you confirm we are not addressing the bylaws in this meeting, correct? We're just addressing the appointment of the committee.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Steele?
Thank you. On the appointing twenty twenty four Prop A Bond Oversight Committee. President Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you for re-promoting me. But no, thank you.
And yes, on the half of a meeting, yeah. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Moving on to item H, Consent Calendar. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
There are none.
Can I just make a correction to public comment? I was given credit for the resolution under sixty one, and I want to make sure that the superintendent and Melli Laugh Smith get credit for actually writing that, not me.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Great. We'll do a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please. Mr. Steele?
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
Vice President Healy?
Yes.
President Kim?
Yes.
Moving on to item I, Board Member Reports. Are there any reports from board member delegates to membership organizations or other board members? Seeing none, I adjourn this meeting at nine twenty seven P M. Thank you.